Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 6th work session of the Keystone Central Board of Directors. We will start with the flag salute and moment of silence. Go call, please. Donahue. Mr. Elling.
Rose.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Knopf.
Here.
Mr. Coke. Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Six Members present. I don't believe we have anybody signed up to speak this evening. So we will go on to our superintendent's report.
Okay. I think, I think I can be heard with that gap. So, thank you all for joining us this evening. It's not very often that we get to have our meetings in our northern tier, on our northern tier campus. So I do want to let everyone know I had an opportunity to, earlier today, to come, come up at the, for the four o'clock girls tennis match, and they're still playing out there. They, we won, okay, we were waiting for that. So that should clinch a title for undefeated girls tennis team here at Bucktail, so if we could just give them a little appreciation. Awesome. While we're recognizing the Bucktail staff, several times over the last few weeks, I've been able to come and get out and about in classrooms here at the high school, as well as at Renova Elementary, and what I wanted to say is a big huge shout out to the staff here because what I was seeing in classrooms was exactly what we set as expectations in the beginning of the year for a higher level of student engagement. Very rarely did you see students sitting in rows in what would be considered a traditional classroom. There was, again, integrated use of technology. Students were on task, they were interacting with one another, and it was highly interactive lesson. So I wanted to, I have shared that with them, not only in an email, but also in personal conversations, but I wanted to take a moment probably to thank the staff here for their efforts at improving instructional opportunities for kids. And then Mr. Hall, the principal, has also been working hard with that staff. And for the board members who are here tonight, there are some special treats sitting in front of you. Mike, can you tell us the class that made these for us?
Sure. Those actually came from one of Mrs. DePore's food classes. So they were really excited. They made those and we kind of made sure that we had enough for all the board members and some of the guests. We didn't know if you'd be meeting an executive session or not, so we kind of made sure that and then spread out.
All right, thank you.
Looked good. Thank you.
So I know the board members are aware of this, along with our admin team, but on Tuesday evening, we held a special work session to look at the facility project at the Liberty Curtain Elementary School. And as of now, the board has decided to explore a little bit more deeply, a single-story new building, potentially at that same site where the Liberty Curtain Elementary currently sits. Mr. Umburne-Hauer and I have been monitoring an email account for any member of the public who wishes to provide input, feedback, questions. They can send those questions to lcproject@kcsd.us. We did have at least one message come through the first day that it was posted, and we'll be sharing all of that feedback and questions with the board members as we move through this potential project. And beginning next week, I'd be pulling together a group of stakeholders. We have over, almost fifty people who are signed up to attend our comprehensive planning stakeholder meetings. And was busy planning that last week and this week with Dr. Mike Duncan, who's a superintendent from Georgia, and he'll be joining us and co-facilitating those comp plan sessions. So be looking forward to reporting back to you as we move through the comprehensive planning process. Our ultimate goal would be that we bring to you a comprehensive plan that we need to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. That plan needs to be submitted by March, and my goal is to bring you a plan in January for you, for your review and potential approval. So lots of processes going on at this time, and definitely a very busy month for our school district. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Move on to committee reports. Mr. Johnson, or no, who has curriculum or co-curriculum?
Elizabeth.
There you are.
Okay, thank you so much. The minutes are beautifully attached. And so I just wanted to first say this, and I've said this repeatedly. Awesome, awesome committee members. It's a privilege, it's a privilege. We had a lot of really great news. The CTC program under Kurt Lynch. He has, and his team. We have probably, or we will have, one of the best CTC offerings as far as I'm concerned in the state. They've done a tremendous job. And in the background, he and his team have been working on the Homeland Security. We know that there's a big call here, and we should be seeing an update real soon to the whole board. Possibly a new business course, education. So he will be presenting to the board at that time, so I don't want to take any thunder away from him, and they have almost six hundred students in the CTC program, which is phenomenal. So thank you all for that. Our athletic director, Stephen, Stephen Halfley. We've been talking about this for a while, whether or not to have some sort of referee camp at the district and offer it. He and his team are working on that, and that could be really exciting for anyone who might be interested in that. They've been putting together a new coach's handbook. He's got a few, you know, cleaned up a few things. It looks beautiful. They've done a great job. And also, our major ed program, I'm fortunate enough to live across the street and I get to watch them. What a great group of students and it's, they put together a handbook. I hope we had a chance to look at it, and you see, they put their heart and soul into that one. Everything else we have in the minutes, Dr. Martin, as always, curriculum is your forte, so please, if you have anything else to add, I ask you to please come forward, otherwise, thank you all very much.
I would, I would just echo what you're saying about our Career and Technical Center program, and Kurt has been doing an awful lot in the last several years to, to bring that back to the forefront and something, I learn something new almost every week about the programming, and for most of you know this, we have eleven programs in our Career and Technical Center, but we are looking at three potential additional programs, two that we could possibly implement as early as next school year. And you mentioned one is Homeland Security, another one would be the other educational side, the secondary education or general education program to which our students could get their freshman year of college done during their junior and senior year of high school, and then move right into being a certified educator within three years, which at a, at a better rate. And so both of those courses, both of those programs are focused around a need in the community. We know that there's a national teacher shortage. We know that there's also a shortage of emergency medical personnel, police, all kinds of service jobs that we need in our community. So we're going to continue to work hard on that. The business courses too, we have a healthy business program, but looking at how do we connect that through the Career and Technical Center gives us many advantages to our, to even the rigor and just attracting students. And something you may or may not know, just why you brought it up, it's the number of students that are in these programs. We do receive reimbursement from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, a thousand dollars per student who participates in the programming. And we've raised the number of students in that programming. Kurt, I'm going to ask you, do you remember the number from three years ago, four years?
Oh, it's like three.
To what? Two twenty-six to almost five hundred. And so that is a solid revenue stream of over a quarter million dollars that we are bringing back into the district through these programs while providing a really robust opportunities for them. So we are looking forward to bringing some things to you, and the newest thing that I learned this week was that our Natural Resources Program is one of two in the state. Just two in the whole state, so we are leading the way with that as well. So thank you for bringing up that, and I think that the key change in the major ed handbook is that we are allowing sixth graders to take part in that program, and the committee was comfortable with that along, along with some backup or support in the handbook stating that the older members on the, in the program would serve as mentors to the younger students so that we could have a healthy blend of students and allow that extra participation. So I think that was the one key change for that, that handbook.
It's the fifth grade or sixth grade?
Is it fifth or?
I think it's fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth.
The reason I'm asking.
You're right, you're right.
Fifth grade.
The handbook only says six. Handbook has been corrected in fact. It says fifth in the curriculum meeting, but not in the handbook. It says six.
But isn't that what was, the changes are supposed to be in the attachment, so if that's not what's on tonight, that's what has to change, handbook should be on for approval for next week. Okay. That good catch. All right, so I didn't have anything else.
That's it. All right. Mr. Johnston, facilities?
All right, thank you. The facilities committee met on September twenty-seventh, and we had several items on our agenda. Many of them you'll see on the agenda here for this evening, for the meeting. Things that were going to be asked to approve here next week. First of all, the first item we discussed was the the bill for the ELA parking and track project will be appearing on here that needs to be approved. The second thing we discussed was changing, switching some of the remaining bond funding memo was so, or rather, the bond funding from, we had originally looked at the parking lot project at the high school down by the tennis courts, but once all the numbers came in for that, it were, it came in way higher than we anticipated. So since the bond fund, funds have to be used by May of this coming year, we are recommending that we shift that amount that had been earmarked for the parking lot project to cover the cost of the track project that was just recently, I think, completed, like, I believe it was completed about a week ago. So we were making that recommendation. The other items we talked about, Penn State has come to us with a request that they possibly would like to have a weather station for a project that they're doing located here on the Bucktail Campus. And I think they're going to be working with Rob and trying to find a location here for it that would be suitable for everybody involved. And that's, that's in the early stages right now. Probably hear more about that later. Just to cut two or three items that they brought for to our, as informational, there's in need of some roof repairs at the property service building that they're going to be using funds that have been already established for that purpose to repair that, which needs immediate attention because they're literally sitting there with water dripping through the roof. Paving repairs are going to be done on the, the Central Mountain High School bus loop. If you've ever driven through there, you'll know that it's got a lot of potholes in it. It's really been becoming a real problem for the bus driver, so that is going to be taken care of. Cafeteria equipment, we need to replace the fryers, the french fries at the high school because the one is at the end of life. It's been in there for a long time, and it's created a lot of problems. So we're going to be replacing them with, I think, two or three.
Two smaller ones.
Two smaller ones that are
Four.
Four. There, but they're going to be much less expensive than the one that's in there. We do have a pretty good revenue from the sale of french fries, so it's, it's going to be money well spent. I think we were talking about one up here at the Bucktail Cafeteria too, so that will, that's for french fries in the works.
The Bucktail cafeteria staff is very excited to get the french fries.
And so those, that project is underway. And the last major item we talked about, we've had our ten-year plan for projects and for the facilities in the works. And we've had the plan listing everything that we need, that needs to be done, that we're aware of. And we have, it's kind of a living document because we, obviously, as things come up and things need to be done, they need to be reprioritized, and as you, everyone knows, we've done a lot of work on several of the buildings over the last two or three years. And a lot of other projects in addition to that. So at this point in time, we need to kind of revisit the whole thing and reprioritize the projects. And so we discussed, you know, what we want to look at in the way of how we prioritize them, what are the, what are the criteria for that? And we were looking at obviously, things that are, have legal and safety implications that need to be done. What impact on instruction and education, education process. Things that are reaching the end of life, like french fries. Any kind of grant funding opportunities and then just to increase the effectiveness of our, our program overall. So I, I think Dr. Martin is going to get with the admin team and discuss the entire plan and reprioritize things and come back with some recommendations to the committee that we're going to look at probably at our meeting later this month, so. With that, I think those were the highlights of the meeting.
Thank you. And policy. Mr. Coke isn't with us. I'm going to take that check.
Um, yeah, we, we met September fourteenth. There were only a handful of policies that were on there for review or revision. The policies that we discussed at that meeting in September are on tonight's agenda for first read. Not a lot of major changes to any of the policies on tonight. A few suggestions from PSBA, but outside of that, no major, nothing major.
All right, so under information items, we have our treasures report and our enrollment report. Does anybody have any questions on that? On, under board, we have our CTC Occupational Advisory Committee members for twenty-two, twenty-three. Mr. Lynch updates this every year. And we have two parent transportation agreements. Any questions on those? And the next one is really, I'm really excited about. It's an agreement with Commonwealth University of Pennsylvania, Lock Haven, Mansfield, Bloomsburg, on a guaranteed admissions agreement for our students. And not seeing anything attached to it. Dr. Martin, do you want to explain that?
Sure, there should be an attachment on there.
Not seeing it, but it could be. User error.
Showing there is.
No, it says there's one there, and there should be, but we will get that uploaded. I don't know why it's not showing it, saying it's there. This is something that we were approached about a few weeks, a few, a few weeks ago, and what Commonwealth University is doing is offering this guaranteed admissions program for our students. There are some processes that students will need to comply with, such as filling out the application by a certain date. Any of our students from either one of our high schools that qualify with the grades would have received a scholarship for reduced tuition, and they can choose any of the three universities within the Commonwealth University, Bloomsburg, Lock Haven, or Mansfield. And so it is a great opportunity on October eleventh. Mr. Hall, Mr. Varely, myself, and Mr. Lynch have been invited to Lock Haven University for a big announcement on this topic. And so what we would like to do is have the agreement with LA, with Commonwealth University approved by the board. We're requesting your, your support for that next week. And the contract lays out like an articulation agreement that you've seen before with other universities and lays out the criteria for the students. So not sure what, it's saying there's an attachment there, but it's not viewable. We will get that to you.
Great.
Elizabeth has a question.
Elizabeth, yeah, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Finally.
All right.
Thank you all for working so hard on this, finally.
Right. And then we have a donation of athletic equipment from the Hannah family that we need to approve also. Any questions? And then the seven policies that are up for first read are in the next section. So next week we'll be voting on them. And then we have our minutes from all the meetings from the last month since our last voting session. Any questions on those? And under business, we have our bills for payment. And then we have a couple of contracts with Soaring Heights and Justice Works. These are just updated to include the language that the board asked for about Clarence's certifications. And then there's an addendum substitute out. This is for ESS for substitute. So it's a it's the different rate for our substitutes, I believe, who are here a little bit longer than normal.
Sure, I can speak to that. So there are times, we have daily subs who come in and, you know, for a teacher who may be absent for a day here or a day there, but we also have situations in which some of our professional staff take a leave of absence that may be longer than ten days, but yet not long enough as ninety school days. So when someone is subbing every day for a series of days, they're actively planning and teaching, not just carrying out someone else's planning. And so it was brought to our attention that we should consider potentially a higher rate of pay because the workload is different between a daily sub covering or someone who is planning and implementing on a regular basis. And so we've been working with the Personnel Committee on what those rates are. The Personnel Committee asked for some research on similar rates of other districts in their, our region. And that's where this recommendation comes from. So is a higher rate of pay for those who are, are planning and implementing as opposed to just implementing someone else's plans? And there's a very, a variance in the rate for someone who is a retiree of our district because we also feel that we wanted to honor them and make, they are very valuable to us, and we thought this might also help attract people to, to give us a hand and serve in areas that are really difficult to find people right now.
And we have an agreement with Grant Support LLC not to exceed seven thousand. This is for us to look for grants for the district, and this may come in handy should we move forward of building the new school and upgrading our current, you know, any other schools, so I think that'll be a nice service to have.
I'm hoping they can help us find a grant to pay for a grant administrator because the, the amount of grants that we've been managing with all the federal dollars, in addition to things that Mr. Lynch is finding and through PCCD, there, there is a lot of money out there. The, the managing, applying and managing the grants has added a significant amount of workload to our existing staff, so maybe we'll find a grant for a grant manager.
Yes, Elizabeth.
Thank you. I thought, maybe I misunderstood. I thought we were talking about, we're going to work with this third partner, and they'd also be, at least for the first year, also, we'd be paying someone to administer all of that. I thought that was part of the, the decision.
Part of the, no, the, what we're paying them for is to help us find the grants and support in writing the grant to, to obtain it. But this particular group does not manage them. That, he did give us the contact information of another company that can help manage it, but of course, there's, there's a fee associated with that as well. So.
I still, for your first year, I, I would completely support for the first year, okay, to have that done. I don't know how the other board members feel, but that's the way I understood it, that we were going to go with another third party. So I just, I'm putting it out there.
We, we talked about it, but we didn't say that we would move forward because right now, until we get, I think there's, I think that step can come for a more in-depth conversation, and that's why I brought it up, was because once we hire the service to help us find and write grants, and we start getting approved for grants, we may need additional support in managing them.
Okay, okay. I'm just saying, I support it though, so, all right.
I think we're saying the same thing.
Okay.
The next two items are the change in funding that Mr. Johnston talked about for the track and field project and the paving and curb projects. Any questions on those? And then we have a change order. That's with ELA to include design specifications that have been processed.
Yeah, that was the first item that I.
What's the first item we talked about today? Okay. And then we have an agreement with Penn State University for their field, field practice on students or student teachers. And.
The PSU one is for school psychologists. We desperately need this help and support, so thank you for participating with that.
And then the, like, home and college is the student teachers. The next item. And then there's an articulation agreement between Pennsylvania Highlands Community College and Keystone Central.
So I did speak with Mr. Lynch about this. This articulation agreement is specifically for students who have completed at least two years in any of our Career and Technical Center programs. Because of the required curriculum from PDE for each one of those programs, there's a business component and entrepreneurship component in the coursework that they take. So because we have approved programs, students who have been through that, that curriculum are going to be awarded some additional credits for their participation in our CTC program if they choose to continue their post-secondary studies at Penn Highlands. So something that we want to continue to encourage our students to take advantage of, if that pathway is something they desire.
And then we have a performance agreement between PennDOT and Keystone Central for Safety Inspector Certification Training Program.
So Mr. Lynch and I also spoke about this. This is just a renewal to be able to have our students in the automotive technology program obtain the Safety Inspector Certification within that program. So many of our program students obtained additional certifications as well.
And adults.
Oh, and in our adult program as well. That's right. Thanks, Kurt.
And next is TriMark food service equipment for ovens for our food service department. Recommend, oh, this is the Westoffer Equipment, is a sawmill and related equipment. That's for CTC program.
It's for the Natural Resources CTC program.
And then the next one is to renew our ENO insurance and umbrella coverage with Liberty Mutual for our property liability insurance. That will not exceed three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars paid for by the general bank. Any questions on any of those? Move on to personnel. We do have a job description for the business manager as G-Search for our permanent replacement for Susan. And then our regular monthly list of leaves of absence, employment, resignations, retirements. Any questions on any of those? And curricular, co-curricular, we have our athletics personnel and our twenty-two, twenty-three club advisors. And then the coaches handbook with revisions that we, that Elizabeth had discussed. Yes, Elizabeth?
Yes, just for the coaches handbook, I, it happens. I, I talked to, I just sent an email very late and I'm sorry. Um, there was a couple typos that we talked about and I wrote it into his email. So I think that's my, what happened, um, with, same with the majorette thing. So it'll be, there's a couple little, just no content change, just a couple of typos. Okay, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Steven's nodding his head back there. He's gotcha. Okay. Any other questions on those?
I have something.
Yes, Butch.
The reason I noticed the majorette didn't include this, that's great, is as I spoke at the co-curricular meeting, I'm not really in favor of fifth graders participating with the seniors. And I think it's something we really need to reconsider, allowing fifth grade students to participate with twelfth grade students. I mean, I understand we've done it for sixth grade a year, but I think that that was a strength. I think going to fifth grade could potentially have some issues. I just, I know everyone says that the lady's really good at running it. She's gonna have them be mentors, but there's been too many issues in the past where we're kids doing stuff with younger kids. I think it's too much of a difference between a twelfth grader and a fifth grader to have them participate together.
That, just the original request came from the advisor, just for clarification.
Uh, I, I hear what you say, what you, but the reason I'm I'm not, I don't have too much of a problem with it is because we've already, already had the middle school kids with a band, the high school band. I mean, it's a six to twelve band, I believe. They go on trips and so on.
What grade were they?
The what, for the band?
Six to twelve.
Yeah. So, and I, there hasn't been any issues, I guess, at this point that I'm aware of. And, and you're right. I mean, it's, it is a huge age gap, you're, a gap there. But and there's, there's always potential problems.
As you said, the band is six to twelve. This has been six to twelve for a few years now, from what I understand. I just think adding fifth grade, I think it's gonna open us up for potential problems. But I'm not in favor of fifth graders participating with twelfth grade. If it wasn't that big of an issue that we could have fifth graders play with a few of the high kids in our sports and, and see, yeah, that way it doesn't, but I don't think we should allow it here.
Well, I have to say that, uh, first of all, this is not a PIA double A governed sport. Okay? So you don't need to worry about that. Second of all, whenever these kids are, uh, working together and, uh, performing together, it's a family. It's not competition, competition between two different, uh, groups or whatever. It's a family working together for a common goal. So I, I don't see a problem with this. Not only that, you've got fifth graders at that school now. And they wanna represent just as much as, uh, everybody else does. So I don't see a problem with this.
Two issues. First of all, second mile was a family also. This, you know, how the second mile affected the school district. Second of all, I, as I said at the co-curricular meeting, I had no problem with fifth graders representing at school with a lot of the sixth grade. Have a program for fifth to sixth grade. If we have to hire another instructor, hire another instructor, but I think having fifth grade, twelfth grade, it's gonna open us up for potential problems.
Elizabeth, a general comment?
Um, yes, um, uh, I mean, we did speak about this in depth at the, the committee meeting, which is, you know, always open to the public. Um, and I, I, I know what it feels like to sort of have a separate opinion about something, but I have every confidence. I mean, I see them out there practicing. Um, I have firsthand account. And I, I feel really confident. And I mean this, that if there is a situation that comes up, is the lead person or any of them going to try to hide it from us? Like that other instance? No. And if I had any, e- everyone knows me. If I have something to say about something, well, there it goes. But I really have full confidence that after this season is over, if they feel that, mm, we might wanna reconsider, I really believe they're gonna come to us and let us know. And that's why we have to have a leap of faith here. Um, that's, so that's why I, I completely support this. And I, I've seen the kids and their attitudes and they're laughing and how serious they can be and um, you know, let's get, let's give them a shot. Let's give them a shot. Okay? Thanks.
Steven, that, just a point of interest. Do you know how many students are active or on average from year to year are involved with the sixth through twelfth grade majorette program? If you, if you don't mind, I just, or even we can talk about it before next week. I mean, one suggestion was adding additional staffing. Um, to me, supporting that recommendation would really depend a lot on numbers um, and logistics as well. So just checking in on how many kids are we talking about? Are we talking about trying to supervise thirty or forty kids with one person? Are we talking about ten or fifteen? So, uh, maybe that might be helpful too, before we add staffing.
Dead set against fifth graders being with older kids. Again, I'm gonna bring up the second mile program. Everyone's made all these same arguments twenty years ago when that program was incorporated into the school district. It didn't fare too well, we all remember.
Are you trying to insinuate something, Butch?
No, I'm not insinuating, I'm reminding you, Roger. So I'm reminding you what happened back then. It's the greatest programs in sliced bread. And look where it's gone to. So I don't believe fifth graders should be in twelfth grade. So if it's that simple, why don't we move up to the high school? You know, let them take classes with twelfth graders. It's not allowed. We don't let them, we don't let them mingle in any of this, any other sport, any other program, nothing else. Are those kids allowed to mingle with the high school? I don't think it should be allowed in this program.
Did you have a number, Steven?
I do. Um, indoor guard, uh, color guard was twelve and indoor majorette last year thirteen.
Thank you.
Steven, how many fifth graders you think are signed up for, what you say?
It's hard to say. We haven't opened registration yet.
I've already been informed that it'll be like about three or four, Butch.
Yes, Elizabeth.
Thank you, thank you, Tracy. Um, and, and something else we discussed during the committee meeting is that this is a voluntary option for students. If the parents have any problems, if they don't want their child to participate, or if they have concerns, they contact the superintendent and we will hear about it. And this is a completely voluntary program for our kid, the students. So please keep that in mind also. And I again, I fully support it, but thank you.
And the last item.
Tracy, I had a question about the club advisors. I noticed when I went down through here, there were some clubs that did not have any advisors listed. Is that, does that mean that those clubs are not not functioning or?
Well, Drama Club says it's inactive. It was inactive, like twenty for twenty-one and twenty-two. And oh, there is a new advisor for that, the end of that one.
But like for student council in the middle school, there's no advisor. Chorus, there's no advisor. I mean, it wasn't, apparently wasn't one paid last year.
Is that? Oh, I'm going to say that, or is that because there may be paid positions? Like through, do our band directors handle those or our teachers? Which is it not considered?
I don't know. I just, I just went through and noticed that there were few in each of the schools that.
In, in some cases, there may not be an advisor who's interest, anyone who's interested in filling the position, but in other cases, they may be, the clubs are no longer active. Um, but if you want, I can get some more information before next week.
Yeah, I was just curious because like, for example, student council, I would think that that would be something that's fairly important. An organization like that. And if there's not there's just nobody interested in adding that up.
We'll get some more information on Monday from our administrative team, since they can speak to what's happening in each of the buildings and we'll, um, get some answers for you.
Especially with courses, no, no advisor for the courses, the high, such about high school either. So I thought perhaps they were doing both, but at the high school point, it was terrible.
The last item on our agenda is an MOU with their support staff. Um, for a support staff employee who has been going to school to get her teacher certifications. So she would like granted a leave of absence for spring so she could do her student teaching. Any questions on that?
That's good.
Alright. That's the end of the agenda.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.